My name is Amy Bingham and I'm the hearings officer for the hearing today. Today is September 30th, 2020, and the time is approximately 2:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment on the rules proposed by the Oregon Department of Agriculture to establish animal rescue entity license rules. In addition to presenting oral comments at this hearing, anyone may submit written comments until 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 4th, which is the close of the public comment period. You can send those comments to myself at the Oregon Department of Agriculture at 635 Capitol Street Northeast in Salem, Oregon, 97301, or you can email them to us as well, and the link's on the website. Comments received after November 4th at 5:00 PM will not be reviewed or considered by the agency unless the agency decides to extend the public comment period for a second time. The Oregon Department of Agriculture will not respond to questions during this hearing. After the close of the public comment period, I will prepare a report which will be available from the department. At the start, I must ask everyone for patience since this is a virtual hearing, and there's likely to be background noise and disruptions or a little bit of slowing due to the internet. So I'd like to ask everyone to keep their computer muted or their phone muted until it's their turn to speak. To ensure there's sufficient time to testify, I'm asking everyone to limit their remarks to three minutes, and you may submit longer written comments if you wish. And to start, if you would like to testify, go ahead and put your name in the go-to-meeting chat box. Are we having trouble hearing me?
I can hear you, Amy.
I can hear you, but I don't think that everyone is on go-to-meeting.
I'm getting audio.
I can hear you.
in the chat box, and then we will all start calling on people one by one. For those who are attending by phone, I will ask at the end of those that are testifying and have put their name in the chat box, I will go through the alphabet and ask you to call out if you would like to testify. At that time, we will go forward with each person one by one. Okay, so remember, for the record, I'd like to ask you to identify yourself by name, whether you have any affiliation, and then whether you are in favor or opposed to the proposed rule. And yes, testify does mean make a comment. Hey, Cecilia, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, Amy. Hi, everyone else. My name is Cecilia Mylon. I run a very small sanctuary out in Elsie, Oregon. I have 12 animals, which is two over the 10 allotment on this bill. And I guess my main comment would be that because we are very tiny, we do take a tiny amount of funds compared to others during the year as donations. And so I guess my comment would be that I would prefer a tiered program where the licensing fee is tiered depending on the size of the sanctuary or rescue. That's my comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, Julia, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, so I'm the vice president of the board for the Willawa County Humane Society, and we also are a small organization and have the same concern that Cecilia does, is that, you know, we, all of our funding is by donation, all of our manpower is purely voluntary, and, you know, having a tiered system would be much better for us as well. You know, we have anywhere from, I mean, depending on the batch of kittens that you get, you could have 10 if you just have two batches of kittens. But we, you know, we have anywhere from two fosters to 15 fosters at a time. So we're not a large organization, but having, you know, a flat fee of $375 would make quite an impact on us. We are also a little bit concerned about the extent of the paperwork that is required for all of this. Like I said, we're a completely voluntary organization, and this would be quite a strain on all of our volunteers to keep track of all of that and provide that type of paperwork. That's what I have to say at this point.
Thank you for your comment, I appreciate that. Randy, you're up next, go ahead and unmute and give us your comment.
Hi, Amy, thanks. I'll turn my camera on too while I'm talking, at least. First of all, thanks for hosting this hearing. I just wanted to comment, I would at least support a tiered system, but I think knowing a little bit of the history of the animal rescue entity law and the reasoning behind it, I would be in favor of just a flat fee that's much lower than the $375 that's proposed. $100 to $150, I think, would be much easier to manage across the board. It would be easier for the Department of Ag to regulate, you wouldn't have to spend time trying to figure out who fits into what tier, and I think that that would certainly help all of the rescue entities that are out there by making it more reasonable. The intent is simply to, the intent of the law is to be able to determine what the volume is and what the keeping practices, and encourage good record-keeping for animal rescue entities and by having a stumbling block with a fee right out of the gate. I think that would, that would put some roadblocks up that aren't necessary. I understand that some of the reasoning might be to help, to have the program help pay for itself, but I think what you're going to find is that people simply won't pay, they won't be identified as animal rescue entities, and you won't get the record-keeping documentation that you want, and so it kind of defeats the purpose. So I'd be in favor of what I think most counties, before it switched from the counties back to the Department of Agriculture, were in the $100 range, $100 to $150 range. And sorry, my name's Randy Covey, manager of Washington County Animal Services in Hillsboro, Oregon.
Okay, thank you, Randy, for your comment.
Hey, Amy, can I ask you, how do we make a note to speak? Where is that at on the app?
In the chat box, there's a, like, a little bubble, like someone's speaking up in the top right corner. You click on that, and then you can just type your name in.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next up, Helen, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, this is Helen. So my spouse and I, Brian, we run a rescue here in Lynn County Sunset Farms, and why we are wholly supportive of a lot of this, because oversight is never a bad thing, inspections, making sure the animals are well taken care of, even at rescues, is not a bad thing. So we are wholly supportive of that. What we're not super on board is, is I agree with a lot of what Randy said, so what's going to, this feels targeted towards the sanctuaries, and these are the people, we are the ones who are actually saving the animals from these organic farms or these family-owned farms that aren't being targeted in this bill, and they are the ones who are actually taking care of the animals. So my question is kind of two-tiered. One, how do we know what's being done on that end? Because if the intent of this law is for animal welfare, I applaud that at all levels. But I'm not sure that that's the intent here. It almost feels like the intent is a source of income for the state, and I understand that the state needs money as well. My problem with that is, I think everybody thinks that all of these rescues are like just rolling in dough. Most of us literally steal from Peter to pay Paul every single month. I mean, we, there are times when we have to figure out, especially during COVID here, if we've got, and we had to evacuate 180 animals for the fires. I mean, that cost us thousands of dollars that we didn't have in our pocket. So now we're already behind, and we're asking, and I'm appreciative that you guys came down to half of the price that it was, but I think what you don't understand is, $300 feeds our animals for two days. That's a lot of money, so if that money has to come from someplace, we're going to have to, it's going to have to come from our personal thing or our personal costs, and I currently don't have a job. So I think that you're going to find that these rescue entities, what they will no longer do is they won't tell you, or they won't register with the state. We already pay a fee every year with the state, which, and I understand, and we're not bitching about that, it's not the problem. The problem is, is one, is this wholly unfairly targeting the rescues who are taking care of the animals that need to be taken care of? And two, is the fee really cost, is it really for the animal welfare, or is it for a state cost to cover? Because you guys are going to hurt the animal rescues.
And thank you for your comment. Christina Lee, you're up next, if you'd unmute and go ahead and make your comment.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, I do share a lot of the same concerns that everybody's mentioning here. I am on the board of an animal sanctuary that's here in Oregon, down by the coast. It's a small sanctuary, and we don't have a lot of animals, and it, we're just over, actually, the minimum number, and it concerns me that these fees can be quite expensive, actually. It's equivalent to what we might be able to accomplish with spaying and neutering animals or their medical care, so we want to make sure that we have sufficient funds to do that. We usually keep a budget of not necessarily over $1,500 per month, and so we want to make sure that there are sufficient funds if there's an evacuation situation, like just recently with the fires, you know, there was so much going on. We need to make sure that we're going to be okay financially. It would also be helpful to know, as far as the funds that you would be collecting, you know, how does that help sanctuaries if it does? Are you collecting these fees also for the types of agriculture that is for profit? By comparison, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Those are the types of organizations that are for profit that should be more concerned about protecting animals. There's very few laws that actually help farmed animals, so sanctuaries are here to help those animals, and so it seems that the financial burden should shift more towards, you know, those industries that make profit off of the animals and do not have any incentive to actually care for them.
Thank you for your comment. Before we go to the next comment, someone has asked that we identify who else from the Department of Agriculture is on the meetup. Would you guys like to unmute yourselves and introduce yourselves? I'm not sure who's on.
Hello, I'm Ashley from Oregon Department of Agriculture. I'm the animal rescue entity coordinator.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. This is Isaac Stapleton. I am the program director for the Food Safety and Animal Health Program areas with the agency.
Thank you, Isaac.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Jack Noble. I'm program manager for the Animal Health and Livestock ID program area.
Thanks, Jack.
This is Ryan Schultz. I'm a district veterinarian with the animal health program.
Thanks, Ryan. Anybody else? Okay. All right, next up, we have two Cathys. The first is just identified as Kathy, the second is Kathy Boss. So the first Kathy, if you'd like to unmute yourself and go ahead and give your comment. Okay, let's go to Kathy Boss, if you'd like to unmute yourself and give your comment.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. My name's Kathy Boss. I'm one of the board members for Exotic Bird Rescue of Oregon, and what we would like to share with you and the state ag is that the theme, I guess, of today is the fees and how they offset the program for you folks to enforce this type of a program. And one of the things we wanted to point out is that many facilities around the state, such as, I guess I'll pick on the Oregon Humane, have, bring in thousands and thousands of animals a year, and the fee just doesn't seem equitable when we bring in less than 100 animals a year, like some of the other smaller rescues. And obviously, that workload is very minute to audit our data or our records compared to auditing a big facility such as a humane society or SPCA. And it's our understanding that the first year, that because the Department of Ag doesn't really have all the data, you don't really know how many animals all of the rescues have throughout the state, you kind of want to charge one fee so you can get the data and then come up next year with a fee that makes a little bit more sense. And I kind of look at that as getting the barn before the horse in a thing. How about, how about having us comply and provide the data, and then look at the size of each one of these rescue groups and organizations and determine the fee that's an equitable In that way, we're all paying our fair share, I guess. We've also been told that the intent of the program is to collect data from all the animal rescue entities, you know, to ensure compliance with record-keeping and so forth. However, there's language within the statute that relates to inspection, search and seizure, that's concerning to us. Now, now, look, we really believe and we support all the animal welfare, and we want, we don't want to see cruelty neglect animals, and we want those who are doing those things to be investigated. But how often are our facilities going to be inspected? You know, what, if it's a complaint basis, which that's what we've been told, what information triggers that complaint and inspection? And furthermore, especially when you talk about avian care and welfare, what's the skill set to be inspector? We're a little concerned about that. Most folks, and I have to say, have it a path in animal services, most welfare organizations don't have a whole lot of skill sets in avian care, they're busy with dogs and cats and some ag and so forth. So if someone were to come into one of our facilities, I don't think they would recognize it, nor is the state vet, from what I understand, certified at avian care, to help make that determination. So we're concerned, will the inspectors have a legal authority to seize animals from the different facilities? I'm not worried about our facility, I'm just thinking about across the board, and their knowledge base and skill sets, they have to even be able to implement that. And finally, as others have shared, the fee will be causing a very big negative impact on, at least, our organization. For a bird to go to the bird vet for us is around $600 compared to a dog going to a vet that maybe be $57 or $75 for an examination. For us, it's $600 for every bird, whether it's a parakeet or it's a cockatoo. And that fee is going to really negatively impact our resources. As rescue groups, we don't have a hidden infrastructure in the wall somewhere where we could pull out buckets of money. And even though you may say, well, it's only $327 or whatever the fee is, it's going to, it's going to impact us, and we need to provide vet care, food, and it's required by law that we do these things, impacting us. What I have to say, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Okay, next up is Jenny, if you would please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Jenny Sullivan, and I'm with Senior Dog Rescues of Oregon, and I've been involved with this for quite some time. All of these remarks are deep in my heart, I totally get what everybody's saying. And we're unique because we only take old dogs, seven and up, so with that said, a lot of them have health issues when we bring them in. It's not just simply have them examined and get shots. Some have tooth extraction needed, all kinds of lumps and bumps needing taken care of, infections, and a lot of our money comes from event fundraising, and we have not been able to do that this year because of the COVID. So that's where a lot of our money comes from, and a lot of our, we depend on donations, and again, with the COVID, the donations were tough to receive because people have to make contact. We don't have a facility, all of our members and volunteers are just that, volunteers in their home. So that amount of money doesn't sound like a lot, but that would be an exam and shots for one dog. And so I have no problem with anybody looking over my shoulder and looking at records, we keep excellent records, we make sure we have everything we need before we take a dog in. I don't see how this is going to prevent people that are doing in-home breeding. We just took a dog in that was being bred to death, and she had the size of a peach on her abdomen, a mammary gland, and this is a nine-pound dog. So that was an expensive vetting, but she was only seven years old, and the people are probably going to get another dog and continue on. So that's where I'm at with it, and then sometimes we have less dogs, and sometimes we have more. You know, it just depends. And I think that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Jenny, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Hadash. Hey, welcome back. Elaine Hartman, if you're here, go ahead and unmute and give your comments.
Okay, I just have two things, which is the $375 fee multiplied by the approximately 510 animal rescues gives an annual budget of $191,250. And I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm all for researching people that need to be monitored and animals seized and all that, but I'm wondering what that $191,000 gets? What benefit does that have to the rescues? And then my second question has to do with the foster facilities, because we're totally foster-based, we don't have a facility. And I think I read in there that each separate physical location out of which an animal rescue entity operates shall obtain and maintain a license from the department. However, foster facility means a separate location controlled by, but not owned or operated by, the animal rescue entity at which a person has volunteered to maintain physical custody of animals that are within the legal custody of an animal rescue entity. A foster facility is not considered a separate physical location out of which an animal rescue entity operates. So my question is, if there is an inspection, do you not inspect the foster locations? Because we're all foster locations. That's it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Teresa. Go ahead and unmute yourself and give your comment.
Hi, my name is Teresa, and I am the president and founder of Shepherds Without Borders Rescue. We are a very small rescue. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, perfect, thank you. I'm kind of new to this little meeting thing. A small rescue, we are based out of Salem. My comment is, and it is a concern as well, is that I do want rescue entities to be monitored. We all know there are bad rescues, and we all want them shut down, and that has been a struggle for a long time in the past. I don't have a problem with the licensing or keeping any of the records, we currently do all of that, but I am concerned that we're kind of being lumped together. I think you're dealing with a lot of different types of entities. We're not a humane society, we're not a shelter, or a sanctuary, but we do rescue from shelters, and we do take that financial liability, run completely, obviously, on donations. But we're rescuing dogs from shelters that can't get a home because they have too much medical stuff going on or things like that, and we bear the brunt of that financially, willingly, obviously, or we, you know, we wouldn't do it, but we are concerned about the fees generated on the fact that we're all being lumped into this same category. And I do have concerns about that particular thing, you know, paying a license fee the same as some shelters or other humane societies that are funded at some point. A lot more animals come through, less medical as well, because they employ their own vets. And we certainly do not do that as well. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, up next is Shelley. Shelley, if you would like to unmute yourself and give your comments.
Good afternoon, Amy. Thank you for hosting this today. I'm finding that I'm, I'm a bit confused. The 375 a year is that per facility or per animal? So if you had two animals that, in your rescue, would that be 375 times two, or is the 375 just an annual fee for each rescue?
Well, Shelley, we're not answering questions and I'm not completely familiar with the program. I'm just the hearings officer, but I do believe that it is meant per rescue. Does a staff member want to jump in here?
And, and my other comment was that if you are charging about, for foster homes, because I am a volunteer with International Reptile Rescue and we do have to foster, since those facilities are actually people's homes, 375 a year for each seems a bit pricey and could you consider a token, you know, $25 for every foster home that is being used by a rescue? And I guess that would be my question and my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Okay, up next, we have Hadash. You're back. If you want to unmute and go ahead and give your comment. Are you there? Okay, we'll skip and come back. And next is Susan.
Susan McCary is me. Are there, is there another Susan?
Nope, that's you. Go right ahead.
Okay. I for the most part concur with what everybody has said. I am the executive director and founder of St. Martin's Animal Rescue. In, we're located in Salem now. We just moved. We specialize in super senior dogs, so dogs who are like 14, 15 or more, dogs who are severely medical and dogs who are behavioral. So we're taking in pretty much the rejects from the main societies and the large shelters and the large rescues who ask us to take these problem dogs. Right now, we have 12 dogs in the rescue, so it's just not that many. But, you know, they pretty much stay with us for life because they're quote unadoptable. The fee is what I have an issue with mainly because that pays for a lot of dog food and it pays for a lot of medical on these senior dogs. Also, I'm not sure that I agree with that. I can't remember who it was, Washington County guy, that, that a flat fee is better than a step fee because it might be somewhat more cumbersome, but it'd be fairly easy to send in your, your tax forms and say, okay, this is what we're taking in a year, or this is how many dogs we're taking in, you know, versus these large groups like Ording Humane who are taking in tons of dogs and have tons of donors. And they're the ones that are reaching us to a smaller guys for dogs that they can't adopt out. It's just very unfair to me. Also, I take in a lot of breeder dumps. And the breeders aren't even regulated as much as, as we're being asked to be. I would like to see the breeder step up to the plate and pay some, some of these fees as well, because if we're going to take their rejects, then, or their overbred dogs who now have mammary tumors and God knows what, that, that they pay their fair share. So as far as the paperwork stuff, that's fine. Inspection is fine. Now, the anybody else a problem with that stuff? But the fees are, are enormous. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Before we go on, I'd like to remind everyone to please mute your microphone if you're not giving a comment. And looks like according to the chat box that Hadash is back, if you want to go ahead.
I am back. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. And I, my name is Hadasa Djack and I run Teconalum Farms Sanctuary in Jackson, Oregon. And I, I'm going to repeat some of what has already been said, which is I don't dismiss the need for oversight, but I do feel like we're animal rescue entities, for-profit organizations are targeted as while organizations are not held to the same standard or required to provide documentation. We are injected to a fee, we're obligated to, then about the piece of D and additional finance burden for us. That is, that's concerning me even more than this. The fee that has been suggested is cost prohibitive for most of us. There are, as many people have said, large, well-funded, well-known organizations that are going to pay the exact same amount as my, my sanctuary, which is very small. We have 136 animals. That may sound like a lot to some people, but for us, that's, you know, for most sanctuaries, that's pretty small. I am largely self-funded and I know I'm not alone in the sanctuary world where we are working full-time jobs in addition to running a sanctuary and dumping large amounts of our own money into this just to keep the organization afloat. We also are taking in animals from for-profit organizations that are sick, injured, horribly damaged, that require significant medical care. We take in animals from backyard breeders and they're not being held to the same standards. So adding an additional burden of, a burden of this fee is just, it, it's intolerable for me. And I noticed that the, if we took the penalty, the penalty was actually less than the fee itself. So, you know, when this originally came out, we said, well, wow, if we have to, we'll just pay the penalty if they follow through with this because it was less than the fee. It's the inequity, it's inequitable. A tiered system could be implemented and perhaps even for some of the smaller organizations, an exemption could be offered. You know, there are a number of large, well-funded animal rescue entities in the state that could probably carry the burden a bit more for that and then exempt some of us that are not bringing in the same level of funding that they are. And that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next is Rebecca Clark. If you'd like to go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Sorry, I had to find the, um, the mute button. Can you see me?
I can hear you. Not see you.
Okay. I hate, there we go. I think I got it again. So I, I'm Rebecca Clark and I run Lancaster Four Dog Rescue, a small rescue in Oregon as well. And I agree with most of everything that's already been said. This year, especially due to COVID, we've been hit so hard. I got $10,000 in grants from best, or from PetSmart last year. I've not gotten but 1,000 this year so far. You know, there's no fundraising availability because everybody's out of money. So expecting every rescue to come up with those funds is just extremely impossible, you know? I mean, I would scrape it together, but like other people said, I work a part-time job with Uber and Lyft and, you know, Instacart, things that I do to actually raise funds for the rescue. The first year, I backed my rescue pretty much 50%. So you have other entities that aren't being included.
And so I, I, I wonder why we can't think outside of the box for funding. Let's not make a burden for these sanctuaries. Let's make an opportunity. Everybody's agreeing that this needs to be done. So why not generate a newsletter with advertising that pays the fees and have these 500 agencies tell some of their stories in it? Why not put in for one of the Banfield Grants for $10,000 and, and why not write grant requests to Facebook? You know, we're all doing that anyway, trying to generate funds. Why does the ag department not engage in some way to fund this? I, I get that we all agree needs to be done. It is, these guys are, I get it, my gosh, clawing along bit by bit and we shouldn't be making hurdles for them. The ag department should be making solutions to what needs to be done.
Thank you, Julie. Up next, we have Donna Jones. Donna, if you'd like to unmute yourself and go ahead and make your comment.
Hi, everybody. I am Donna Jones. I'm president and founder of Oldies Bookies Senior Rescue in Medford, Oregon. I also primarily take in the seniors and super seniors from the high kill shelters. I also pull medical dogs from Mexico. My biggest concern is also the excessive licensing fee. I'm, you know, most of us rescues are in debt. We're not only barely scraping by, but we're in the red. And we're all doing, you know, work that is basically cleaning up everybody else's messes and the licensing fee, you know, it takes away from the animals. It just means that we can't save as many. And as it is, there's not enough rescues to save what is needed. You know, $375 even. I am, I run solely on donations and if I have people donating to me, I don't think, and they know that what the license fee is and they know that there's a good chance that their donations are going to have to go towards this license fee. I'm really concerned that I'm going to lose donors and I don't have a lot as it is. So people want their money to go to helping animals, their vetting, their transport, you know, feeding them, getting everything that they need, all their basic care. And, and when you are adopting out seniors, you usually can't get the adoption fee that you would for the younger animals, but you have way more money into them. So I'm in the hole almost every single dog that I take in, which is completely fine because I'm not, I'm not in it for the money. Obviously, I'm in it to save the animal, but it's really hard to survive as a rescue as it is with being in the hole with animals. So the fee just makes things so much worse and so much more stressful when rescues are barely hanging on financially and emotionally as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Up next is Julia.
Hi, Willau County Humane Society. Not to be mistaken as, you know, as like the great big humane societies, just wanted to clarify that because even though our humane society, everything is donation-based. I made my comment about the fees. I agree with the tiered system. I wanted to add a comment about the inspection. This would be, you know, I, I wasn't clear on whether the requirement would be to be able to inspect fostering facilities. One thing I read said it did, another thing I read implied it didn't. But we took a poll here in the county of our fosters and asked them if they would be okay with having inspectors come into their homes, because that's all of our fostering facilities, their private homes, and inspect. And they felt that that was a violation of their privacy. So, you know, I would, would like it if the state would look at, you know, rewording that or looking at some other option. Because I don't think that they're understanding that most of these small rescues are private, you know, fostering facilities in someone's home, a dedicated room, a dedicated garage, something that, you know, their own home. And they don't particularly want inspectors in there. That's it.
Thank you. And Christina, you wanted to comment again.
Yes. And I think this has been touched upon by a few people maybe a bit earlier, but I'm just kind of thinking in a general context regarding regulation, I'm thinking about entities that rescue animals versus, you know, agricultural entities. They're obviously different. That's not me. I don't know what that is.
If you please mute your phone.
I'll, I'll just wait a second. Okay, it seems to be gone. Um, so I was just thinking that, you know, it seems that animal rescues and sanctuaries should fall under different, under different jurisdictions, so to speak. So I'm thinking they wouldn't be under agricultural regulation. If the state's looking to, you know, be involved in the quality assurance of animal sanctuaries, maybe it's better to separate agriculture from rescue entirely. Perhaps look to existing quality standards such as the Global Federation of Animal Sanctuaries. I just think that like ODA, DOA, Fish and Wildlife, Forestry, all the, all these, you know, state agencies just don't seem to be the appropriate one for, for our types of nonprofits. And I would think that a state agency, what would be really great is if we have one that's for us for reducing violence, because that is what we are looking to do. That's why we have these sanctuaries. So I'm thinking with the right regulatory agency, there can be improvement and accountability, avoidance of conflicts of interest, and ensure that any licensing, inspection, records and regulation activities around animal, animal rescue would be appropriate.
Okay, appreciate that. Up next, we have Love a Pit Rescue.
Hi, my name is Joe. I'm the owner of Love a Pit Rescue. And we are a very small facility and we take in about half of our, of our rescue facility and senior overbred pit bull and bully breeds. Our last dog ended up having an emergency surgery for a uterine infection for $800 and she still has two more surgeries to go. All of our donations that we get are always donated directly to the animals' needs and not to our organization. We only ask as we have needs. Everything that we cover for the rest of our rescue comes out of our pocket. And so obviously, looking at those numbers already, just from that one dog, I mean, that, that was half of her surgery. This really dips into the care for senior and regular dogs. Our ability to be able to run our facility by dog food, have vaccines on hand instead of having to run to the vet all the time. I mean, these are all things that affect how we are able to run and at what cost level. I mean, on a good year, we get 11,000 in donations and we're putting out 20 to $28,000 a year on dogs. I mean, you know, we're by no means running in the black. And this is just another thing to very small organizations that are trying to do good things.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody who did not sign up in the chat box who would like to make a comment?
Can I, can I get clarification on something? I'm not sure if it was, if it was asked where these funds would go. I came in late.
We're not taking questions about how the rules are going to work or where the funds will go. But you can contact the program area to ask your questions and have them answered at that time.
Okay, I guess my comment, it would be, I worry about, depending on where these funds go. Are they replacing, are they going to an organization that is asking for funding for the same things that we need the money for? So are we taking in donations and giving it away to another organization to do spays and neuters and, and whatnot for low income families or for high need animals? So are, are donations actually are being sent out to other organizations? That's a concern for me.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments?
This is Rebecca Clark. I did want to just, sorry, I did just want to say I missed the very beginning. Are these questions and comments being written down and taken to the, the meeting that's going to happen in November?
The, so the, the meeting is being recorded and all of the comments will be given to the program staff to evaluate before the final rules are published.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So all these things should be addressed at that time, these questions? Or will the final decisions be also made at that time? I mean, is, is this a done deal?
Well, there's no, as far as I'm aware, there isn't going to be a meeting with the public. The program area will take all of the comments that are received either in writing or here at the hearing. And then they will review those and then decide if they need to make changes to the rules or not, and then go forward. So if you have specific questions about how the rule works or how things will be used, you can contact the program area and they will answer those questions.
Okay.
So after this, after this next meeting, are there any opportunities to appeal?
I'm not, I don't believe that there's any opportunity to appeal. Okay, so in the comments, Ally, if you'd like to testify, you may unmute and go ahead and testify or make a comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, so my husband and I run a small sanctuary that is 100% funded by ourselves. We spend pretty much all of our money trying to do the most good that we can for the animals. I am listening to all of these stories and I'm thinking, what is the point of becoming a 501(c)(3) and actually registering? Because it sounds like a pain in the butt for people that are working day in and day out to try and do something good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, this is Cecilia. I was first to comment and I would just like to add another comment to my comment, if that's allowed.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thanks. I think because I was first and a little nervous, I really just was focused and keyed in on to the, the fees portion, which we've all basically said the same thing. But I guess my other biggest concern with this is that a lot of us in this rescue and sanctuary community are taking in animals from neighbors, community to community that's got way more animals than we even are caring for. Like it could be the breeders, the backyard breeders, the hoarding situations, farms that just don't want to take care of their animals in a humane way. I think what, what I see as a little unfair is that those, that those situations are not being regarded in the same way as, as this program is regarding us in the rescue community. It's really disheartening to see that we'll be inspected and we'll, you know, pay the fee because that's what we're supposed to do. But yet our neighbor's going to continue to grade 50 pigs a year and not have any consequence to that. So I think that that's another huge concern for me and I'm, thank you for letting me testify that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, Brian Reads, if you would like to unmute yourself and make a comment.
Hi, thanks, Amy. I appreciate that. And thanks again for hosting this event. Cecilia said a lot of what I wanted to say, but I do want to add my voice to provide my comments about, about how a representative from a, a micro sanctuary sees this. I understand that, looking at the way the state operates and different agencies operate, that with the number of sanctuaries and other AREs that exist and the fee, I'm guessing that it would probably just cover the costs of inspectors to go out and check out indoor and outdoor facilities, feeding protocols, and healthcare for the animals that we're responsible for, as well as the record keeping auditing function. That would probably absorb every bit of these fees that, that that number of entities are paying. But as Cecilia was focusing on, I'm going to call it hypocrisy. Our community is concerned about the health and welfare and longevity, long healthy and safe lives of the animals. Whereas food production animal entities are concerned with how much money they can make by exploiting the animals. So as the state's laws are written, we understand that it's perfectly okay to slaughter a living animal to eat it. Or to take its eggs, or to take its honey, or what have you. And there's little oversight in that. The fees are minimal. There are branding fees or identification fees, transfer ownership fees, annual inspections. But there's, there's not very much oversight. And I can't really see that other than an initial look at AREs that we would really get that much oversight. So it puts us in a position where we feel like we're being under the microscope a little more. We're, we, we do welcome anyone to come to the sanctuary and, and check out our indoor, outdoor facilities, our feeding and healthcare. Look at our $30,000 to $40,000 a year OSU animal hospital vet bills and, and so on. We, we, we welcome that because we want everyone to know that these organizations are taking care of the animals the best we can. Whereas food production entities, we don't feel like they get the same scrutiny. Nor the same fees. It's just a a double standard. So that's, that's what I'd like to add is, as my contribution to the comments.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Could I, could I say one more thing? I can't figure out how to do the chat thing over there. I'm sorry. Jenny, again, we're not only helping the dogs, we're helping the community. A lot of the animals we get, they're elderly people that have to go into care facilities or have passed away and the facilities get in touch with them, us, because the family can't take care of the dog. Divorced, people losing their homes, especially now due to COVID and the fires. So we're, we're getting hit in different ways now. And it's more of a community effort, you know, to help get these dogs in good homes. And that's, that's what I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Up next, we have Keitha Romain.
Hi, this is Keitha Romain. I'm president and founder of Keitha's Kitty Rescue in Lynn County. I just want to iterate what everybody has said about the fees. We're what's considered a micro rescue of cats. And we take in medical fees that the local humane society turns away. And anything outside of our vet bills, which are, we just had a cat that had to have liver shunt surgery. And that has cost us around $5,000. And we have medical cases like that on a regular basis because we do take the medicals. Whereas the other area rescues do not. So I just want to say the fee will be very damaging to us. We sweep by every single day with donations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Donna Jones.
Um, two quick things. Not only should we not be paying an exorbitant amount of money for licensing, but it should actually be the other way around because we are picking up the pieces from so many other organizations and the community. We should be getting government support for, you know, some sort of subsidies to, to stay afloat, to keep going. My other concern is I'm in Jackson County, which is in Southern Oregon. And we don't have a county limit on how many animals that we can have. And yet I am being forced to be a permitted rescue. So anybody down the street could have 40 animals, as long as they're taken care of, they're not questioned and they don't, they don't have a fee. They don't have inspections. So what is the motivation for me to be permitted and have to pay the fees if there is no limit for animals in my county?
Thank you, Donna. Love a Pits?
Yeah, so I just kind of want to add it, add a little bit to what we had commented on already. You know, again, like I said, we, we have very limited donors. And, you know, a lot of our money is used up and beyond what is donated monthly and yearly here. So I mean, I guess my main, my main statement and question is, why is this not being focused more on the larger entities that can afford this? Like Humane Society of Oregon and, you know, some of the other ones that has the funding to help support this instead of the little guys that are just barely keeping afloat every year and keeping their doors open? Because again, like, like stated, you know, I mean, we've pulled dogs out of dog fighting rings in our community, et cetera. We're not just, you know, pulling the sick dog down the, down the street at the shelter. We're helping out in our communities. And it does, it really feels like we're just being singled out.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Kathy again with Exonburg Rescue. There was really some great comments made here today. One of the, the themes that really stood out for me was the fact that what every single one of these rescue groups who are not funded through contracts and so forth, through their municipalities, are doing this to deal with a community made problem. We didn't create this problem. We're just trying to help out. And that, I think that's what I'm kind of coming away with this, with this extra fee. You know, the, the 300 plus is tough for all of us, but it's, 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 I, I agree with the one woman who spoke. Is that because there's this problem brought on by our community who is failing to take care of many of these animals, we should be compensated. The state should be looking at us because if we didn't take these animals on, the larger funded, publicly funded humane societies, animal controls and so forth, would have to take these animals on. Euthanasia rates would go sky high. Veterinary costs would go sky high. Feed and care would go sky high. And they all know and they appreciate our assistance with taking care of the variety of creatures out there that we're all taking care of. And I think this really needs to be, you know, strongly thought, thought over. The fee is not totally exorbitant, that we all can't pay it. It's going to be really tough for us. But think about what you're doing. Don't make it tougher for us. You know, give a hand, help us out here. And that's my, what I had to say.
Thank you, Kathy. Would anyone else like to comment?
I'd like to make one final comment if I could.
Sure, if you'd give me your name again.
My name is Shelley Reed.
Go ahead, Shelley.
Thank you. There is one big gaping hole in this legislative act that you're considering. And we all just ran up across it with the wildfires. And that's if you have a house fire, if you have a wildfire, if you have a flood and you have to all of a sudden get a bunch of your animals to temporary fosters. We need some kind of a protocol as to whether those fosters now need a separate license or can there be a 90, 120 emergent, you know, day emergency fostering? But I do believe that emergencies and fostering during emergency conditions does need to be addressed within this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to comment. This is Hadasa again.
Sure, go ahead, Hadasa.
Thank you. What, the point about subsidizing sounds so good. And I know that would be a complete redo of the program that's being proposed. But perhaps when the inspections are done, for those of us who are working in community, specifically the person who was talking about doing spay neuter and they're paying for this out of pocket. We've rescued fighting roosters. There's people that have rescued fighting dogs. I've been out in the fires for the last couple of weeks, pulling animals from the fire and paying out of pocket to take care of these burned animals. Perhaps the inspections could look into the work that we're doing, look at our records and see if we are a reasonable organization to subsidize rather than charge us. See if we could be a benefit to our community and look at us as an ally rather than just as a funding stream. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Covey.
Yeah, hi, Amy. Thanks for letting me speak again. I just want, I won't get probably an opportunity to talk to so many valuable rescue entities out there again. So I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts, if that's all right. I know it's a little outside of the purpose of your, of your hearing. We talked about the fees and, and I think that probably is what initiated some of the initial concerns. The law itself, maybe, maybe not everybody understands, and I apologize if, if everybody's aware of this, but the law itself passed several years ago. And my understanding is that the Department of Ag is not proposing any changes to the law itself and actually wouldn't have the authority to do that. So the inspection requirements and the, or the record keeping requirements are set in state law. And the, the way to address that would be to contact your legislature and, and, and ask for some changes to the law in regards to that. I'd like to make a suggestion, maybe even a challenge, if you don't mind. And that is, rather than seeing the, the regulation and the record keeping as a, as a burden, I think it's a great opportunity for animal rescue entities to identify themselves and to maybe even increase their opportunity for funding. and to maybe even increase their opportunity for funding by being able to show that they do meet these requirements and showing your donors that you are licensed and legitimate animal rescue entities. Not that your donors are going to question that if they know you and they spend time with you, but it will increase it, has a potential of increasing your reach and giving you some documentation that says, "We've been inspected by the state. We're licensed by the state, and we have an opportunity to increase the services that we provide with your donations." I think that's an opportunity that you don't currently have because there is no licensing in place. The other thing I'd like to mention, and I only say this because I've been involved in animal welfare and a lot of it from the enforcement side. I know I look super young, but I've been in it for like 30 years, over 30 years. So I've seen a lot. And some of the comments that are being made about importing animals from other areas, other states, and coming in from Mexico, it really does create a pretty significant public health concern and animal health concern in the state of Oregon. And that's one of the reasons that the regulations were developed and the law was passed, was to help make sure that animals are getting proper vet care and they are identified. And if there are outbreaks or of certain diseases, that they're more easily tracked. And we're all interested in that. That's something that all of us that are in animal welfare and animal rescue should really latch on to and see as a significant benefit to having some licensing and regulation of animals that are coming into the state or being passed around throughout the state. You all do great work. We all do great work in animal welfare and animal rescue. But we do need to have some good record-keeping. And this law was intended to help make that happen for a variety of reasons. So thanks for bearing with me. And I hope you'll just consider some of that and let me know where I might be off base. I'm happy to hear that as well.
Thank you, Randy. Susan, go ahead.
Hi, this is Susan McCary of St. Martin's Animal Rescue again. I do want to say that what I know about the started-in-Senate bill sticks. And I believe that that passed in 2016, 2017. The bill was actually written by Sharon Harmon, the executive director of the Oregon Humane Society, whose salary is over $350,000 a year. And this is just what I know from the bill. Senator Courtney was the one who pushed it through. And I remember during her comments on the hearing, Sharon Harmon said that she compared a small rescue to being like drug dealers, meeting in the middle of the night in parking lots, getting dogs from here and there and everywhere, and selling these dogs for about $500 apiece. I was so insulted by that, and she would not return my phone calls. I was just incensed that that was part of her testimony. At the same time, there was a rescue, Willamette Animal Rescue, I believe is what it's called, out of, I can't remember if it was Kaiser Salem, that had a big warehouse of dogs that were very ill, very sick. And so, yes, this is on the heels of that concern. The dogs are being brought in from out of state, bringing diseases and weren't being cared for properly and being adopted out. None of us were in favor of that. We all thought that was horrible. Many of us had concerns about, I think her name was Alicia, and had made reports and had done things to, I mean, in other words, we kind of police ourselves. If you know of a bad rescue that's doing things like that, we do try to reach out and either offer help to that rescue. But Alicia wouldn't accept any help. I know several people did offer to help her. So that is where this all started, was from Sharon Harmon and that Willamette Animal Rescue situation in like 2016, 2017. So it's not a bad thing, and none of us law-abiding rescues have a problem with inspection or have a problem with keeping records. That's what we would do anyway. But the fee does seem exorbitant for those of us who are just barely surviving and who truly are taking on the messes other people create. Backyard breeders, people who are hoarding animals. We are the ones who are taking these animals on. It's not the big humane societies that are taking these animals on. It is not Oregon Humane Society, no. They're taking over the adoptable ones, and they're the ones that are charging $500 to adopt a dog, not us. So it is targeted towards us. And I am a lawyer as well. And I can tell you that any law that's passed, the only people who are going to follow it are the law-abiding people. Those of us who are here in this meeting, we're going to do what we need to do to be compliant. But then you have those others out there who are not going to do it, and those animals are still going to suffer. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe with Love a Pit?
Yeah, so kind of stemming off of what was just said and with Randy on his. Again, we are not against the inspections. We are not against the record-keeping. We already keep track of when a dog comes in and where it came from and everything that we get through the vet and everything that we do here, and when they go out and where they're at, et cetera. The record-keeping and all that is none of our concern. Again, as stated, it isn't these big organizations that are taking on the dogs that are the messes of our community. It's us. You know, Portland Humane Society sits up there and does evaluations and turns away any troubled dog all day long. And that's how they keep their no-kill status. And we're the ones that pick up their mess dogs that they don't want to take. So again, once again, I do as well, as I'm sure many of these other rescue groups still. We are the target of this. And it's not based off of trying to do the regulations. I see the regulations and the inspections and being licensed and permitted as a way to say, hey, look, or with state standards, you know, we're doing what we're supposed to. We are a credible rescue. We look forward to that opportunity, but not at the cost of what it would take for us to save a dog. Three-quarters of our dogs are within state. The dogs we do take out of state are the breeder seniors from California. We have them go through a health certificate, and they're two-week quarantined before they come up. We do everything we're supposed to. There's nothing that we're not doing that we're supposed to here. And we very much feel like we're the blunt of this.
Thank you for your comment. Vanessa?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am very nervous, so I apologize if I stutter. I am a small feline-only rescue entity. I am the only one that works here. I do have a couple of veterinary technician friends that do foster for me when needed. I am a licensed veterinary technician, and I have to say that I only pay $35 a year to keep my license to practice medicine and save lives in a hospital, however. And I just think that the fee is a ridiculous amount, especially for us smaller entities that work out of pocket or by donations only. I do feel that we do God's work and we do the work of our community and pick up the slack of our community. And that we should be recognized and subsidized for that effort that we make when others don't. I also, I don't know how or if this can be changed, but I do feel that the number of 10 is, I don't know. It's just a very low number when working with animals, especially when you work with a lot of animals with litters of kittens or puppies or whatever it might be, goats, chickens. 10, just, that's two mom cats with a litter of, you know, four kittens each. And we all know that a lot of these kitties that come in off the streets have litters of five, six, seven, eight sometimes. And puppies even more. As a vet tech, I've worked in the animal rescue world, shelter animal medicine, small animal practice medicine. I know people that breed dogs, purebred dogs. They don't have to answer to this stuff. I don't even know or think that any of them file taxes on the money they make on that stuff. It's not my business specifically, but I know that they're not being monitored like we're being monitored. And I feel like we are being targeted by these big brothers that have the money and have the power to implement these laws and slap us on the wrists if they think we're doing wrong. Because, I'm sorry, in the animal world, whether it's a show dog or a rescue dog, I feel like a lot of people feel that they can do no wrong and that they're always right. And the big guys just can always stomp the little guys. So I do feel, sorry, I went off there. But I do feel that the number of 10 is not very many. And myself, I only take in about probably 10 to 40 cats at any given time in my care. And again, I just took in 33 kitties. That's five moms with litters of kittens. That's not very many cats that I have the honor of saving their lives. But that's 33 kitties off the street, not starving to death, not spreading disease in our community. And that's what I feel that we're all here for. And we shouldn't have to be punished or made to work any harder than we already do for what we do. When, again, this is humanitarian efforts that we do. We are trying to make our world, our human world, for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Jenny?
Thank you. We, as senior dog rescue, get many correspondents from shelters here in this area to take these old dogs that they don't want to deal with. And the most upsetting part of it is, used to be, they would at least get them spayed for us and get the shots. Now they tell us they can't afford it. Well, that puts us between a rock and a hard place. We want to help these animals, but they're already in a shelter. And then, you know, we get this sob story of they're going to have to put them down. It's just a lot of pressure being put on these small organizations. So, you know, they're getting all the money, but we're getting all the sad cases if we don't take them. They're euthanized. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Helen from Sunset. I'd like to say something real quick to Randy. So Randy, I think if I listen to the comments here mostly, most people here have no problem with oversight. Most of us are law-abiding, and we are in it for one reason, the well-being of the animal. No other reason. I mean, most of us are in debt because of this. So we're not against oversight, and we're certainly not against record-keeping because that's how we take care of our animals. Without good records, we can't walk out there and know what each individual animal's needs are. So most of us have zero issues with that. And honestly, to put a state certification by us that I've state-certified, it doesn't matter to half of the donors. I mean, you can go out there and say that you have GFAS, and nobody even knows what that is. Or if you say you have Gold Star, and Gold Star is that charity, is a nonprofit charity go-to. But really, to get the Gold Star status, you fill out a form that takes you maybe 30 minutes, and you're automatically got Gold Star, basically. So that kind of stuff really doesn't matter. What matters is what we do for the animals. And that's what social media is for us. Case in point, you're talking about the welfare of the animals. We had a case this year. Somebody tipped us that they were selling very sick calves out of a trailer out of parking lots. They were. I went there, and they were. We immediately took seven of those calves. They were so sick. Two died within 24 hours. OSU barely could save the other five at the cost of thousands of dollars. Not only did they have the trifecta, which one of the trifecta is a zoonotic, cryptosporosis is a zoonotic, and in most dairies, it's prevalent everywhere. 70% of the dairies have cryptosporosis. So not only did these calves have the trifecta, coronavirus, the rotavirus, cryptosporosis, but they also had salmonella, which is another zoonotic. When we got Keith, I got all the case. I talked to the state vet, and what they did is not illegal. There is no oversight with this woman did. She can continue to peddle these sick calves. It's buyer beware. So the oversight that you guys are trying to do here feels targeted to people who are actually trying to help animal welfare. So the state veterinarian, and he was like, "Look, it's law." And I don't blame him. It is the law. So for you to actually say that this is, I think that the hypocrisy knows no bounds here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Kristi. I would like to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, Kristi, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I volunteer for a couple of farm animal sanctuaries. And I work at a sanctuary that's mostly for dogs, but also has pigs. So I'd like to echo the comments that everybody made, that the fees are really high, especially for small sanctuaries that maybe have, you know, 10 to 15 animals. You know, pretty much all your money that you have is just going towards the animal care. And then when you have to pay 200 to 375 for something, you know, that might be one or two less animals that you can actually care for, you're not making that much money in donations and whatnot if you stay small. Also, I'd like to mention about the scale. I think it's going to be cost-prohibitive for people to be required to weigh their animals, especially for larger animals like cows and pigs. A 500-pound animal scale is around $350 and $1,000 for a larger, over 1,000-pound scale. And I don't know if anybody has tried to weigh a cow or a pig, but it's difficult. They don't want to do it. And, you know, it's just, it's just kind of a pain. So I don't know if you can think about that requirement about having to weigh larger animals. You know, and I think you can tell from looking at the animals, for the most part, if they are over or underfed, if they're healthy. You don't obviously need to know the exact weight of an animal to know if they're healthy. Also of concern to me is that sometimes animals are dumped at sanctuaries, and people are not going to be able to know who they came from. So they're not going to have a name, a phone number, an address. You know, sometimes sanctuaries hide their location because that happens a lot. If people know where you are, they will just dump animals. And then if you choose to take them on, you know, you won't have that information or you won't be able to take them following this particular regulation. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kristi. Jake?
Hi, my name is Jake Kamens. I'm a deputy district attorney who works throughout the state of Oregon on animal cruelty cases. I just wanted to comment and tell everybody here that I really appreciate your engagement and involvement in this conversation. And I've worked over the last seven-ish years with many different animal rescue organizations, large and small, and have had uniformly great experiences. And really understand that this community cares a lot about animals. And I, for one, hear you about the money issue, and I am very cognizant of that. One of the things that we try to do in the criminal world is when animal rescues are involved in criminal cases, is seeking restitution for the care of animals. Now, whether that ends up getting paid is kind of a case-by-case basis, but we do try to get that done. And I also would like to just say that I appreciate everybody's engagement and enthusiasm for other related animal legislative issues. I understand that the scope of this hearing is about the rules that are put into place to put the legislation, which was originally in 2013 and was modified recently, into play. But I'd love to see the engagement from the community, and I'm really glad that everybody's everybody is here taking part in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Any other comments?
Not for me.
Yes, go ahead. Would anyone else like to comment?
I don't know if you saw the comment, the question in there, this is Rebecca Clark again, but the recording of today's meeting, will that be available to those of us that participated?
We will be putting the, either the recording or a transcript on the website, so if you have signed up to receive emails from the department, you'll get notified when that occurs. And if you haven't, go to our website and you can sign up to receive email notifications.
Is that the same website of where we would have gotten the notification for today's meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Any other comments? Okay, at this time, it's approximately 3:33, and we have no one else requesting to testify. I'd like to thank everyone for attending and providing your comments, and remind you that written comments will be accepted through 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 4th, and our hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.